Okay. It's nine o'clock, a meeting is called to order. Would you all please rise?
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this glorious day. We just thank you for having the honor to be here, the freedom to be here, be with our troops overseas, protect them and guide them. Guide this court, Lord, to do your will. All these things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a pledge of Texas.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. We have special presentations, Bob.
Judge Commissioners, we're here to honor some people with their service time. The first is Linda Parr, who works for our county attorney, and she's been here for 20 years. Next is our tax assessor-collector, Teresa McCoy, and she's been here for 10 years. Next one is Thomas Johnson, who works for the SO. He's currently out on patrol, I think, so Roger will get this to him. The next is Jared Green, and he likewise has been here five years, and he's on patrol. The last is Gary Morris, works for the sheriff, and he's been here for 10 years.
Thomas works night shift, and Jared, he has another job that he works up in Grand. That's why they're not here today, but I'll make sure they get this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. All right, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. Steve, you want to read this?
I can, Judge. Proclamation, 2014 National Day of Prayer. Whereas throughout history mankind has relied upon prayer for comfort, direction, and strength, whereas the prayers encompass concern for family, community, state, nation, and this world, whereas in 1952, an annual National Day of Prayer was made official with the signing of a joint resolution of the US Congress by President Harry Truman, and whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan set the date, well, they're the good old days, for the annual Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of May of each year, whereas the National Day of Prayer pays tribute to our nation's democracy, which respects the beliefs and protects the religious freedoms of all people to pray, worship, and obtain according to the, and staying according to the dictates of their consciences. Now whereas, be it resolved that I, Darrell Cochran, County Judge, along with the Commissioners' Court of Hood County hereby proclaim a recognition of Thursday, May the 1st, 2014, as a National Day of Prayer, and commend this observance to all citizens of Hood County, Texas, signed on the 22nd day of April by the Commissioners' Court present, attested by Mary Burnett, County Clerk.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Dever to approve the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Is there any further discussion on this?
I believe the lady that asked us to read that handed out a flyer as well. Do you want to mention that, Judge?
Yes. Yeah, we have several items here. There's a National Prayer, Day of Prayer breakfast, it begins at 6:00 AM, the program at 6:30, and the Granberry Resort and Conference Center, and all are welcome to attend, so be sure and be there for that. And then here's a letter, a letter of invitation for the National Day of Prayer, and then a, a, a posted, it will be posted in the courthouse. I'll take this back and have it on a bulletin board, and I guess, I bet the Commissioners have one too, and they'll post it in their building. So we're really glad to be behind this National Day of Prayer. And I did not see in there where those were the good old days, did you?
(laughing).
Okay.
Is that ad lib?
Is that ad lib? All right. Well, it was the good old days, but anyway, so thank you all very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The motion carried. Would any, anybody like to, any citizen like to make any comments about any agenda item? If they would, would they please raise their hand? The sheriff has a form. C and nine. I will move on to the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
I just ask for a clarification on item D with Stan McRoom, as for the move that monthly activity, financial reports, is that, just give, I mean, I just would like to know, is that for the, the first of the month reports we get, and you're asking to move?
Well, they should be on the next court, Commissioner. As you know, we have converted our accounting and reporting systems over from NetData to Tyler, and it just takes some getting used to, from the auditor's office all the way through the treasurer's office and the receiving process, and there will be some new routines. So we hope to be back on track in short order.
Thank you, Stan.
That'll be in May, that's in May 11th.
Yeah, and that should be a correction, that will be in the May, no, it's May 12th, I believe. Didn't we move it from the 13th to the 12th? Make sure that's typed right.
You have your calendar?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at my calendar. Just before we...
We're having to move the Commissioners' meeting because there's a Commissioner, Judges' and Commissioners' Conference down in Galveston that they're, we're attending, so that's on Tuesday, so we have to use Monday as a travel day, so we'll have it, and then leave after that, so that's the reason we're moving it to Monday.
That's correct.
12th is correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
With that being said, I'll make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item A, all the way through G, please.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve the consent agenda, is, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. The next item on the agenda is road, which is no items, and development compliance. We have a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the variance request for sections 5 dot 4B, dot 3, dot B of the developed permit regulations for 745 Blue Bonnet Drive, Granberry, Texas.
Judge Cochran, Commissioners, the property at 745 Blue Bonnet Drive is located in the water quality district. The, the variance request to section 5.4B, 3B deals with density in that particular area in our regulations. It prohibits multifamily units, recreational vehicles, things of that nature. It prohibits in that, that area unless they have both public water and public sewer. In this, in this instance, the property only is, is hooked up to public water. So the, Ms. Mary Black is in the, in the audience, she's representing the potential developer buyer of this property, if you should have any other questions.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider this variance request for section B dot 4, dot B, dot 3, dot B of the development permit regulations for 745 Blue Bonnet Drive. Does any citizen wish to make any comments?
What they're trying to do, this 10,000 square foot building out there that Mr. Cordell owns it, and he'd be here today, but his wife had eye surgery in Arizona, and they're wanting to, they're not going to add to the building, they're not going to take away, and it's got a state of the art, and y'all have that all in your system, where Jim Davis said this, that it's, it's an aerobic, and it's underground sprinkler, so, and it, it fits. If there's 500 people in the restaurant, it was a restaurant, it is, now they want to make it into, like some apartments, uh-huh, and it already, that septic's already in, and y'all have that in your computer. And it's, it's, I guess, well, it was 45,000, it cost Jim Davis to put that in, and it was engineered by Mr. Sims, and everything was done according to what they were supposed to do. And we want to put that into, they asked for 18 apartments, and I have a drawing for that, they will, they'll be, they can do it in nine if you don't agree to that, that many, but that's, the, the system would hold like five, was adequate for 500 people in the restaurant, so it should do nine, just one-bedroom apartments, uh-huh.
Okay. Is any?
Is that in the water quality district?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it similar to what we had out in Acton at?
Bootlegger.
Bootlegger? Okay, so it falls within that one mile? Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? What's the recommendation on this, Mr. Lenny?
Your Honor, the staff doesn't recommend anything on variances.
Okay.
Wanted to uphold those.
Commissioners, y'all have any other questions?
Well, the problem is that I have with it is that, you know, maybe it's time we go back to the Development Commission, I know two members of the Development Commission are in here, but maybe we go back and, and look at, as growing pains in the county have happened, we're starting to get bigger and we have more different requests. We did have a gentleman, I think a year ago, came forward and asked for a RV park, but he's within that water quality district. Now, this situation, it was built for a restaurant, is that what I'm understanding, and so it has aerobic system, but I don't know how that deals with, in the codes, single-family dwellings. So, you know, the water quality district was developed before anybody on this court was here because of the protection of the lake levels due to the fact of faulty septic systems that were leaking into Lake Granberry. I believe you probably know that, Ms. Black, being a relator, you've probably heard that before, but that's why there's a one-mile radius around Lake Granberry.
I understand that. All of Indian Harbor is closer to the water than we are, and, and, and when somebody builds a house down on Indian Harbor, they put, they put in an aerobic system that's not near the class of this one.
Yes, ma'am, that's single-family dwellings, and they get an OSS feel from environmental health, and they're inspected, but, I mean, it's the regulations that are in place. I mean, I understand what you're wanting to do, it's just that, maybe that's something we, we need to discuss in the Development Commission, but...
So what, what reason would we have not to be able to move on with that?
Right now, it doesn't meet our code, it doesn't meet our regulations, because you're within a mile of the, of the water quality district. Not that I ever know of, have we allowed a variance inside the water quality district, because Senate Bill 1, I believe, was Senate Bill 1, allowed us to put regulations in place. We're one of the only counties, if I'm wrong, James or Donald, that are allowed to have these specific regulations because of faulty septic systems around our lake. Is that correct, Donald or James?
Yes, sir.
And you're correct, there never, never has been a, a variance request that's been approved in, inside the water quality.
Has this come out before for apartments in that building?
The same thing, RV, RVs, multifamily, yeah.
Table it, thank you, back to the Development Commission.
So do you have documentation for me on that, so I can give it to the owner?
Yeah, I gave you a copy of the regulations.
James is precinct.
Give the meeting.
James is precinct.
James? What do you want to do?
Table this, so they can get back to it. Okay.
You need a motion now?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, table this before we, so we can get back with the Development Compliance Committee to review the regulations on all this and see if we can go on with this, or...
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Dever to table this public, this, by the way, public hearing is now closed. A motion made by Commissioner Dever on this section 5 dot 4, dot B, dot 3, dot B of the development permit regulation for 745 Blue Bonnet Drive. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion. I mean, I'll second it so we can discuss it.
All right, I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I, I feel like we, we at least owe it, if we, if we deny it, it goes away, is that not correct?
Yes.
So if we table it, we allow her, at least to, we allow her time for us to go back to the Development Commission, even though it's not on the agenda for tomorrow's Development Commission, but to discuss and look at our regulations with the committee members.
Okay.
And then she'll have to put application in to bring it back if, if we change our regulations, but right now the regulations aren't changed, is that not correct? So I'd like at least, I think, if I'm not answering for Commissioner Dever, but a month for the Development Commission to look at it and review the, our regulations, not this permit, okay? Because she hasn't filed for it, she was asking for a variance.
Yes.
Okay. So we're just tabling this for now, in the way I understand it, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
All right, any further, any further discussion?
The issue I have is we've already turned down one gentleman's application that was similar to this, so I, I have a problem making a variance for one entity and not another.
I'm not asking to do that, I'm asking to look at the regs and see if, I mean, I think the guy, the gentleman last year pointed out that our regs were more stringent than state regulations, so maybe it was time to go back and revisit our regs, because I was in a meeting yesterday with the BRA in Austin, and they said we didn't have a lake problem. Is that not correct, Judge?
They said we do not have a, like, an environmental problem with the lake.
That's what he, that was his comment he made.
We almost fell out of our chair, seriously.
But I mean, I'm only asking, maybe we need to review that to half a mile instead of a mile, Judge, that's all I'm asking to look at. Then, yes, will it cause an avalanche of people asking, yes. But that's... But if we deny it, you know, I don't know the answer, but I mean, things do change over time, so do we, do we go back and review our, our rules and regulations, or do you just, I, I agree with you, I have a problem with denying somebody a year ago and not going back and looking, but I'm asking for the Development Commission to review the regulations and then see if we're out of line, or if we need to revise our regulations, is all I'm asking.
All right, I have a motion made and seconded by, to table this till the Development Commission can come back with some recommendations. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, have the motion carried, have one Commissioner Tout voted nay on the tabling.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments.
Judge and Commissioners, before we get started, Nelda says she had a purchasing question. Do you want to take that up now, or do you want to wait until that item comes up on C9? It has to do with a proposed purchase pursuant to Local Government Code 130.908. I didn't know if you wanted to hear Nelda's request now, or do you want to wait until that item comes up on the agenda?
Let's wait.
Okay. Then, moving on, as you said, to the one budget amendment that I have, Constable Jordan reported that the patrol car that Roger Hill uses is out of commission, and it needs repair, a bearing kit in the rear end, and also front brakes. He has proposed a budget amendment from departments that he has control over, and he's provided enough money, he can make the repairs, it'd be about $650, and that's the request that I sent to you late yesterday, and I do apologize for the late notice, but it was just one of those things where the car's out of commission and...
Well, what's this got to do with that 112th?
Oh, this doesn't, this is...
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, this is just the budget amendment that you mentioned earlier.
Okay.
I'm sorry for getting us off track, Judge.
All right, sorry. I entertain a motion to approve this budget line item amendment.
Come on.
A motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve a line item budget by Chad Jordan's department for 600 and what?
Well, he's, he's moving $371.
Okay.
The total of the repairs would be just about $647.
All right.
Second.
I have a second. By Commissioner Dever, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Consider payment of bills?
Judge and Commissioners, the bills for your consideration on the list that I provided you come to $477,280.59, but in addition to that, after I submitted that, I also received from Donald Lenny and Alan McGee, a, an invoice from Northeastern Pavers Incorporated, and Mr. Lenny says this is related to paving at the Emergency Operations Center, $61,370. And I wondered if you wanted to be, wanted that to be included as well, but I have provided you the list of the items to be paid. Among them are $12,962.96 to Benny Keith Company for Groceries, $10,252.97 to Charter Communications for Data Services. There are some transfers from the General Fund into the Intugent Defense Fund. Those come to $67,103.66, and that's an internal transfer, and it's just to cover attorney fees that have already been paid. They are paid directly out of that fund, and then we request reimbursement for that once a year. Then to Jack's Lawn and Landscaping, $25,000, and this was a payment, as I understand it, a progress payment for the landscaping at the Emergency Operations Center.
Motion to ratify paying the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to ratify paying the bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion on the payment of the bills? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stan. Miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action to accept county attorney's report. Welcome back.
Thanks. That was quick. This is the report of the activities in my office for the first quarter of this year. I'd like to, on page three of the report, point out to you, under the Child Protective Services cases, sure, the details on that. This court approved sometime last year the use of our ADRS funds that Ms. Hitt and had been collecting on family cases to use for mediations in family law cases, and you'll notice that on the Child Protective Services cases, that from January to the end of March, we had seven mediations in those CPS cases, and those seven mediations all resulted in settlements and final disposition, so that, the final hearings, we had 11 hearings, seven of those were uncontested because of that mediation, that, that you all approved the funds for those ADRS funds, so that is, that's really helping to move our cases along and having us spend less time in court. I'll, I'll answer any questions that you have about this report. It's pretty self-explanatory, but if you have any questions about particular things, be happy to discuss those.
Anyone have any questions of the county attorney? I think everybody's reviewing your report now.
Okay.
Will you elaborate, Lori? I mean, this is a great report, you've done a good job every three months, or four months, coming in every quarter and bringing this report. At one time, we talked about, last year, about if they had a, if they were allegedly accused of a felony versus a misdemeanor, would you, would you expand on that, how you're working with Rob on that? Because we, as you know, our concern at our level is the jail, people sitting in jail and out-of-county prisoners. So at one time, you and I had a discussion about what you do there and how you do that.
On page one, if you look back, under other criminal case actions, I had eight cases that I reviewed that I sent to the district attorney for consideration, and I did not file those cases. In the past, what we did, what the office did, was they filed all the cases that came, knowing that some of the arrests, some of those cases, were misdemeanor, usually drug offenses that accompanied a felony drug offense. And we would file them in the misdemeanor court, file them in the felony court, and then, knowing that we would dismiss the misdemeanor case in the meantime, and what happened was, very often, the court, the two different courts appointed two different attorneys for the two different types of cases, one for misdemeanor, one for felony, and we ended up paying for court-appointed attorneys in cases where we knew from the outset that we were probably going to dismiss those cases later on. So that number eight, where I put cases sent to DA for consideration, those were misdemeanor drug cases, or sometimes driving while license invalid cases, that accompanied some methamphetamine case with the district attorney, and I, I stay in contact with David Tucker. If he tells me he's going to accept a case, I reject it outright, and that way, even if an attorney has been appointed in that case, we don't have to pay that attorney on the misdemeanor case because they haven't had to do any work on that case. So I'm trying, trying to do that as best I can, so that we don't incur those extra costs, which seemed to me to be kind of ridiculous at the outset. That, I don't know whether that helps, it certainly doesn't help get a person out of jail faster on that case, but it does avoid us having to pay court-appointed attorney's fees for those eight cases.
Okay.
Now, the rejected cases, I'll tell you that a couple of those that just happened recently, at the end of March, they were cases where they were misdemeanor drug offenses, or again, driving while license invalid offenses, and the, one person had an INS hold and a US Marshal's hold, another person had a felony hold out of another state, another person had a parole revocation pending, a parole hold, and I just dismissed the misdemeanor cases out, rejected them outright, so that they could get on and, and be released to go wherever they were going to go, because at $50 a day, or $45 a day, by the time those cases came to fruition, it would have been probably six months that they'd have been sitting here in jail. So those 35 rejected cases, many of those are those types of cases where it was not a DWI, not a family violence, and I wanted to get those people out of jail and on down the road to wherever they were going next. So, anything else?
No, thank you for that explanation.
Okay.
Sheriff, you have anything?
No.
James?
Good job, Lori.
Thank you very much, Lori.
A motion to accept her report.
All right, a motion made by Commissioner Berry to accept the county attorney's report, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider a report on fire conditions in Hood County from the fire marshal?
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Recently, I've been receiving a lot of questions about potentials of burn bans. I figure if I'm getting those questions, y'all might be too, so that's why I wanted to come and make a quick report. Using KBDI numbers, starting from last Monday, April 14th, the county average is at 227, with a 14-day forecast of 340. As of yesterday, the county average is 167, with a 14-day broadcast of 200... the county average is 167, with a 14-day broadcast of 245. So as you can see during the last seven days, our average has been dropping as well as the 14-day average. We're also staying below this 14-day forecast. The National Weather Service, as of yesterday, was predicting this week to be in the mid-80s with a chance of 30% rain Wednesday and 20% chances Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. With this continued rain forecast and lower KBDI indexes, I do not recommend any type of burn ban at this time. Our office will continue to monitor these indexes as it does regularly. With the rain and added moisture in the plants, this will help inhibit any fire threat to this area, but it does allow for vegetation growth. And this office, along with the Texas Forestry Service and our local fire departments, would recommend that residents continue to be aware of their surroundings and their property and to mitigate these threats around their homes. These mitigation efforts are as simple as mowing and maintaining their property, trimming low-hanging tree limbs, cleaning out gutters, flower beds around their structures. This office would also recommend that our citizens consider having a family plan in the event of any fire or disaster. And information for their Ready, Set, Go program can be obtained through my office. There have been no major wildland fires in the county. The added moisture and the quick response from our fire departments to both grass or brush fires, as well as controlled burns, has lessened this problem. The biggest and most important factor, I believe, in reducing this fire threat is the citizens themselves. They have been reporting regularly to the fire marshal's office by phone and through the department's website, pointing where they're going to have a controlled burn. These same citizens have also been cooperating and understanding to postpone any controlled burns due to the many recent red flag warning days we've had due to the high winds. In closing, I'd just like to thank our citizens for their cooperations, our firefighters for their dedication, their families for their understanding, and this court for its support to help keep us all safe. And I'd answer any questions if anybody has any.
Does anybody have any questions for the fire marshal? I'll entertain a motion to accept the report on fire conditions in Hood County from the fire marshal.
Motion to accept report.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Taut. Then is there any further discussion? Then all in favor of accepting a report on the fire conditions in Hood County from the fire marshal?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the presentation from Joel Black, a Back, rather, on the proposed boundary map and resolution endorsing the application by Langdon Center for State Cultural District from Texas Commission. Commissioner, precinct four?
Joel's here. I think he's going to give a presentation. I think he was at city council last week or a couple of weeks ago. He's going to give a...
Last Tuesday, yes.
Excuse me. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Joel.
I'm here on behalf of the Cultural District Committee. We are preparing an application to the state of Texas, to the Texas Commission on the Arts, for an official cultural district designation for downtown Granbury. This will be our third attempt. We've got a, Steve has a copy of the resolution from June of 2011, as well as a copy of the resolution that the city passed last Tuesday. And what we're asking is for a resolution of support from the county that we can include in that application that is due May 31st of this year. The boundaries of the cultural district run from Travis to include the library, the Veterans Museum, over to east on Crockett to include Lambert Branch Park, and down Pearl Street to include the downtown area, as well as the Conference Center and everything down that way. An official cultural district designation will allow us to apply for grants and programming at no charge through the TCA programs there, that we could bring programming to Granbury to do things in the park, to do things at the library, to do things at the Langdon Center downtown. And it's, it's really just a status, an official status thing, that the Texas Commission on the Arts would apply to us.
Okay. I have the resolution here. Jeff, will you want to read the resolution?
Sure.
A resolution of support for the historic Granbury Arts and Cultural Districts. Whereas a cultural district has been designated to assist the district and county to develop a public-private partnership to support said district, and whereas the city of Granbury has signed a resolution of support for said cultural district, and whereas the Texas Commission of the Arts will be petitioned to designate said cultural district. And now for, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, that the county, Article I, endorses the submission of this application and agrees to participate in the development of said cultural district. Article II endorses the goal of economic development of said cultural district within the context of preservation and rehabilitation of our historic buildings. Article III endorses the goal of tourism development of said cultural district within the context of contributing to the overall visitor development goals of the county. Article IV will appoint a county official to represent the county on the governing board of said cultural district. Article V, by this action, direct county staff to act, to actively support and cooperate with governing board to develop and maintain said cultural district. Article VI, by this action, request all residents of county, and especially those citizens who own property or businesses within said cultural district, to support, promote, and help maintain activities and events in said district. Article VII directs the county judge to sign and submit such resolution on creation of said cultural district. Signed this 22nd day of April 2014 by Darrell Cochran and attested by Mary Burnett, county clerk. Okay. After hearing the resolution, does anybody have any questions for Joel?
Make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve the resolution just read in support of the historic Granbury Arts and Cultural District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Joel. Next item is to consider and take appropriate action on a request from Carrie Dyer, Lakeside Baptist Church, to ask the county commissioners permission to hold the second annual Granbury Living Christmas Cards on the historic downtown square.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by thanking the judge and commissioners for your role in clearing the path for us to have the event this past Christmas. The overwhelming feedback we got from city and county officials, our merchants, tourists, as well as the citizens of Granbury, was that the event was a big success, that it was a meaningful part of people's holiday season, which is what we were hoping for. The reason I'm here this early is because we'd like to kind of earmark that second weekend in Granbury, second weekend in December, for this event on an annual basis. Just as the first weekend in December has become synonymous with the candlelight tour of homes, another wonderful event in Granbury, we'd like for this to become a part of the tradition in Granbury. And so, again, just asking permission from the Commissioners' Court for December 12th and 13th this year to hold an event that will be almost exactly like this, this past year's event. And over the next few months, we'll, of course, secure all the proper electrical permits and health permits and such that we did last year to make sure that we're on the up and up.
Did everything go well from your end last year? Is there anything we can do to help you?
It went smoothly. Everyone I worked with, with the city and county, was very helpful, and the merchants as well. I got some good feedback from some merchants and patrons of ways that I think we're even going to be able to improve the event this year and have some more programming as part of the event on Saturday during the day to get even more tourists there during the day, because it was mostly in the evenings this year. So we want to continue to improve and make it just good for the county and good for the city.
I nearly froze to death last year.
Yeah, we all had our hand warmers and long johns on for sure.
Does anybody else have any questions for Carrie? Now, I entertain a motion to approve Lakeside Baptist Church to have the Christmas card on the square for December 12th and 13th.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Consider and take appropriate action to approve a request to transfer funds for line item, for special judge. Stan, do you want to do that, or do you want me to?
Go ahead, Judge. I have a copy.
Okay. What this is, is a budget line item to approve. We're having, we've overspent the funds for special judges to be called, called in. This is Judge Loving, who is a statutory probate judge that we bring in out of Anderson County, which is near Palestine. So I'll entertain, I'll make that motion to approve that line item.
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Berry. Does any further discussion on this? What we do is we bring in probate judges a lot on contested cases, more difficult cases, and so that's what he's brought in for. Any further discussion?
I just thought a contested case was passed to county court law.
Some of them are, but the ones that are particularly complex, we, we do that. Any other discussion, questions? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on a resolution formally requesting that TCEQ hold a public hearing at a suitable location within Hood County prior to TCEQ taking action on the renewal of the application for the TPDES permit number WQ 0001481000. And I have that resolution here. It says, whereas Hood County is an administrative division of the state of Texas situated around Lake Granbury and Brazos River Lake, and whereas Decardova Power Company LLC and Luminate Generating Company LLC has filed an application with the TCEQ on November the 5th, 2013, seeking renewal of the TPDES permit number WQ 0001481000, which authorizes the discharge of once-through cooling water previously monitored effluent at a daily rate not to exceed 1 billion, 41 million, 480,000 gallons of water a day. Whereas the future lake levels of Granbury would be adversely affected by any action taken by the TCEQ granting or denying the TPDES permit as previously mentioned. Whereas Hood County has grown and prospered since the completion of Lake Granbury in 1969. And whereas edvalorm values of all real properties in Hood County are enhanced by the beauty and recreation benefits of Lake Granbury. And whereas Hood County realizes the benefit of substantial sales tax revenues from residents on the lake and from tourist visitors to the Lake Granbury. And whereas Hood County, a public hearing on the renewal of the application for TPDES permit number is, if held, TCEQ takes appropriate action on this, would provide Hood County with citizens with an opportunity to address their concerns on this permit. Now therefore be it resolved by the Hood County Commissioners' Court, and so forth and so on. Does, and what this will mean, that they will, if Luminate builds this, which I don't know if they're going to build it or not, but if they, they're asking for this, and they will probably use about 1% of the water that's taken out, and the rest will be returned to the lake. So, does anybody have any further questions about this resolution?
The only question I have is, the reason I think it's important that we ask for this hearing, is the fact that, under federal law, the cooling water intake system should be treated as a new permit. They imploded, as we all know, a couple of the reactors or however they generate electricity. So the only thing is, I've not heard from anybody from their public relations or anyone explaining what they're doing. It's listed in the public notices of the paper as a renewal. But yet, from talking to many people that have been involved in the Lake Granbury Coalition, water, that when you shake on a new intake, which if they build two new reactors or two new generators or steam generators, then it should have a hearing because it's possibly a new permit. And that's the only question. I just want somebody to explain it. I think we've figured out from the Coalition, three different companies take water out of Lake Granbury. Wolf Hollow, Squaw Creek at Comanche Peak, and now the Decardova plants. We just had a discussion earlier in this court about water quality. So I think that if we're going to spend taxpayer money at the city and the county level and from, from the Coalition and from Lake Granbury waterfront owners, we owe it to them to ask every question, dot the i and cross the t's.
Is this permit specifically for Decardova?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion on approving the resolution requesting a public hearing on the renewal of the application for the TPDES permit number WQ 0001481000.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and approve a county judge to sign a document regarding the TAC County Choice Silver Program for Retiree Supplemental Health Insurance.
Morning, Judge. Recently, I was in Austin and was made aware of this available for our retirees. The beauty of this program is it doesn't cost the county anything, and we don't have to do anything as far as maintaining or taking on money. This is a program called Silver Choice for retirees. It's a supplemental insurance, which they deal directly with TAC. We don't deal with us at all. And what they can do is, number one, they have to be retiring. Number two, they've got to be on Medicare. So then you would have your supplemental. The supplemental is through United Healthcare. It's Plan F, which is the best one they have, and it costs them $210.93 a month. They're directly billed. We have nothing to do with it whatsoever. For the retirees and the fact that we don't have anything for them at the present time, I thought this would be something worth taking a look at. It is a good plan. I'm very much aware of it. My wife has it, and it paid for a complete hip replacement. So I'd like, I'd like to ask your signature, or the court to bless the judge to sign it, and then we send it out to TAC, and they take care of everything else. What they do, it's when the retiree's ready to go, they have a packet like this that they'll give them. It's got everything in it. They fill it out, and we don't even touch it. Anyway, that's what it is.
Okay. You've heard Bob's presentation on the county participating in the TAC County Choice Silver Program for Retiree Supplemental Health Insurance for people on Medicare. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion on this Silver Choice program?
Judge, I do need to make, make everyone aware that it's only for, I've got this set up for May 1st, and it's for every retiree, May 1st and on. It doesn't grandfather anybody.
Okay. The motion made by Commissioner Taut was to approve the TAC County Choice Silver Program for retirees on Medicare after May 1st. All right. Any further discussion?
Now, what will happen to the previous retirees? Are they not, they can't opt in?
They won't, no, they cannot opt in.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Sheriff's Office, consider and take appropriate action regarding the Bureau of Justice Assistance Physical Program 2014 for Bulletproof Best Partnership Grant Application.
Judge, commissioners, every other year, the feds put out this grant, and we participated in it every year that I can remember that it's been put out. So this year's no different. The last, two years ago, we got the new constables up to speed, and I've sent emails out to the constables, fire marshal's office, and then my guys for all law enforcement included in the county. And then it's from the sheriff's office that gets submitted, and I've submitted it the last couple of times. it the last couple of times. I put a letter on each of your desks right before the court started, but this year, I'd like to apply for this grant again, and so I need your approval to be able to do that. This year, what I'd like to do is, this grant is a 50% payback. So, we buy it, submit it back, and they reimburse 50%. So I have to make the request upfront, and it's basically for a request for up to two years before they have the next one in 2016. So I'm requesting 12 vests to replace the old vest and the new vests that we might need from replacing officers, from people that quit and need different sizes, things of that nature. So, total cost to be, well, individual cost is $810 that today's cost, and that's on a state contract through GT for a Level III vest that meets all the standards. So for 12 of them, that's $9,726 is the request that I'll be putting in for the grant. As far as the money to pay for those, then I'm also requesting on that last paragraph, second to last paragraph on the letter, that request this money be out of Fund 55 capital money. I know that's been a, money that's been up for discussion and haven't really been able to do anything with that. This is something, all I have to do today is make the application for the grant. It's not that we have to spend the money today, and it's not going to actually be spent in the next month, or two months, or three months. It's going to be spent over a period of the next year or so. So, but I had needed to put all that in at the same request. So, that's what I'm requesting, is that you approve me to apply for this grant, to ask for 12 vests be approved at a total cost of $9,726. At least let me get that done, but then the rest of it is, if it can be paid for, out of capital Fund 55 money.
And we would get reimbursed half of that, correct?
Then the county-
Up to half?
Yeah, the county would get reimbursed 50%, so half of that, so a little over, well-
Forty-eight.
Hundred, yeah. Would come back to the county upon, and this grant is always paid back fairly fast. I think within 30 days, once the paperwork is submitted. So, it's a little bit out of pocket, but we get 50% of it back. That's, it's been a plan that the feds have had to make sure that law, law enforcement is protected as best as possible, and that's why they've set the standards for what we can get. We can't just get anything. We have to get a vest that fits under their guidelines, and so we get Level III vest under the National Institute of Justice standards.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Does anybody have any questions for the sheriff on this?
What happens to the old vests, Roger?
Well, they're like-
It's nothing, you can't sell them or do nothing with them, can you?
It's like stuff in your refrigerator. It's got a date, and the general date for when they're recognized is not worthy of, I don't want to try them out either, is after five years. I have one vest that I have, my personal vest, that I've had for well over that. You know, I've been careful with it and took care of it, but what everybody recognizes as a warranty is five years.
So, can they use them for training? Can somebody wear them for training, getting used to wearing them and stuff like that?
Yeah, and here, I believe it was a couple of years ago, I came before the court and asked, and we had some of those old, old, old vests, and we donated them to Weatherford College.
Okay, yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So we put them to good use for the people up there, and it helps to, it's better than nothing, I guess, but they're not actually warranted after five years.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of those vests from Fund 55.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Taub. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever to approve the purchasing of, or permission, to participate in the grant and the purchasing of the vest not to exceed $7,000, $9,726.
That 50% reimbursement would go back into 55, right?
Correct.
All right, is any further discussion? Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the creation of a PayPal account to receive donations from the public for the construction of the new animal control facility.
Judge, I talked to Kelly, and she has not been able to sit down with the county attorney yet, and so she asked that if it be possible to pass on this. I know there were some emails that came from TAC, but still haven't been able to sit down and talk to Lori. So, request that we table this and put it on another court after we get to sit down and talk to the county attorney about that. So I ask that you pass it today.
I entertain a motion to table item B under 8 for the Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever to table this action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taub. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from the State Fire Marshal's Office asking the SWAT instructors to teach a patrol rifle class in May or June.
Judge Commissioners, I sent out an email on the 10th requesting this, that the State Fire Marshal's Office has requested that, my SWAT team is getting pretty well-known across the metroplex and across the state for their training and standards that we've set forth, and these guys are really highly qualified, and most of them on the team are all instructors. So, they requested that we teach a class for them on patrol rifle. So the only thing that it would, there wouldn't be anything that would cost Hood County and my department. It would be just my guys, my instructors, teaching the class, and they would pay for all the ammunition, any cost that might be incurred through the State Fire Marshal's Office. So, but what I'm requesting is, the cost would be $300 per person, and they've talked anywhere from 10 to 15 people coming up to take this class, and if it goes well, it might even be more than that. So, that could be a pretty good amount of money, and the SWAT guys have been pestering me, needing some more equipment. So over the years that I've been sheriff, I've covered all the extra equipment that they've ever needed out of abandoned vehicle and forfeiture money. So, what I'm requesting at this time is, if we go forward with this class, could this $300 per person charge that the state's going to pay go into my line item 564-487, which we set up in the budget a number of years ago, which it's zeroed out right now. I haven't put any money in there to utilize it, but that money go into there so we'd be able to buy maybe some extra SWAT equipment for the guys.
Did you say 564-487?
Yes, that's what I had down. I believe that's correct.
I thought we changed those to four digits, Stan. Is that a-
Oh, okay, that's the old number.
Yes, we'll have to check the cost reference.
It's under illustration down towards the bottom, and it's, the last three digits were 487, and it was a-
Okay.
I had a dive team and a SWAT team line-
Probably 4870 now.
Yeah, I think that's zeroed.
That was out of the old budget number, so.
Why did that get a smile from the county treasurer?
He enjoys the new Tyler system.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I have a, I have a motion to approve the sheriff's request to, for the Fire Marshal's Office to do, SWAT instructors come down, a charge of $300 per person, and that money would go into the Sheriff's Fund 564-4870.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taub. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Consider and take appropriate action to revise and/or clarify the motion made and carried on October the 16th, 2008, the special meeting of the Hood County Commissioners' Court regarding the local government code 130.908 to read pursuant to local government code 130908 to set the amount of expenditures for officials not returning to office in January of the new year not to exceed 1/12 of the budget month. These expenditures are not to interfere with the daily operations of these offices. The typographical error was, it was put in as 1/12%, which is not 1/12. So we're just merely correcting that. Do I have a motion to correct that?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taub.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion on this correction?
Now, does this take effect after the general election?
The, the way the law states it is after the primary or, and/or general.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it should be after the general, but that's not the way the law reads.
Okay, that, that's the way I read the Attorney General opinion, say it was after the general. I mean, I'm more concerned with the-
Well, when is that? When is that? Is that a John Cornyn?
Yes.
The law has been changed since John Cornyn. The 130 has been changed since he gave that.
Okay.
So it does say primary now. Is that not right?
There you go, Judge.
Let me read this. I'll read this. It says, if an incumbent or precinct officer is not renominated or not reelected to the county or precinct office of a county during the time following the date, the results of the official canvas of the primary or election returns are announced, the Commissioners' Court must approve any expenditure by the incumbent county or precinct officer who was not renominated or reelected over, amount set by the Commissioners' Court. So what that one, that one did is, it was, had some terminology in there about commissioners.
Commissioners.
But they removed that and made it for all county offices. Okay. All right, I have that motion made by Commissioner Taub, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Is any further discussion on this item? Yes, who wants, do you need to make any?
I just need to talk to you about something that needs repurchase, and it's by the county clerk.
Go ahead, yeah.
One of these, part of this says, these expenditures are not to interfere with the daily operation of the offices. And this purchase, I do not believe interferes. In fact, she has to have this stuff. It kind of puts me in the middle where I don't know what to do, because if I go ahead and sign off on this, they order it, and then it came to your attention, and y'all didn't think it pertained to that, which I think you will on this, but if it's something else. You know, it puts me in the position that I approve something that y'all may not consider a daily operation thing. That's the only reason I'm bringing it to you now. This is for special paper they have to have to do marriage licenses, death certificates, those birth certificates. So, she's got plenty of money. It is over 1/12 of that budget for the month, but I do believe it's something she needs.
We've already approved it, right? Any other one?
No. This is something that's not even come to pass. I haven't signed the RFE yet.
Okay. All right, so Stan hadn't brought it to us for approval yet.
No, it hasn't.
I thought we decided that we were just going to put these in with our bills, and that way we could move on and look at them each. I mean, I thought, we already had some this week that were in our bills.
I wasn't aware of it.
You were copied on the email, but, I mean, I mean, you could have got lost in cyberspace, but I'll make sure you see it. But Stan copied us with three or four different things. This, they were 1/12 above, and-
Okay, so even things that have not yet been approved, his were. I do know the employees you're talking about.
I see your question. I'm like Jeff. I think this is a terrible law, but we don't set the law. The state in Austin does. I think it's really designed for the new budget. We don't have, I don't think we have, we don't have any elected official right now abusing their power.
Right, and I agree with that.
Okay, so it's designed to protect the county taxpayers and the counties when you have that type of situation. So, we're going to have to play by the rules, and you're just doing your job, I understand. So, you got to go through the process with Tyler. I mean, you get the system, and the judge signs it. If the judge thinks it's at, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but with a new system, you still see it, and he gets to see it. If you think there's an issue, then he'll put it on the agenda, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
That's the way I would prefer to do it.
It's y'all's pleasure. However you want me to handle it is what I'll do.
That's the way I always thought it's been handled.
Well, the first line of defense before we got Tyler was the RFE and me stopping it, because then you're dealing with something that's already been done. Because once they get their requisition, and it's been approved, they can go out and buy that material. So this is a way, if it was being abused, and it's not, that it would be stopped before that happened.
I understand, you know, I mean, we have an employee that's been in the county 20 years, and now there's a law on the books or regulation that says, you're micromanaging.
Right.
So, I mean, we need to be, I mean, I don't like it, and I'm like Jeff. I don't read it the way that it's been read, but that's why there's a Attorney General opinions, okay? But I think it should be in the new budget, but that's not the way that, I mean, me and Stan agree to disagree. The judge and I agree to disagree, and obviously Jeff gave his while ago, what he thinks. But we'll just, we'll all play fair and try to move on and get through this. Nobody's appointing or accusing anybody of anything.
Right.
Just, you do your job, and if you see something out of the ordinary, then bring it to the judge's attention, and we'll go for it.
Okay.
I mean, if Mary wants to buy a new car in October, we probably have a problem, okay? You know, but-
I, there's a meeting in Stevenville coming up on-
May 8th.
For, when?
Fourth or 8th, yeah.
May 8th.
May the 8th, and we have an opportunity to address through Texas Association of Counties any changes that we, and I suggest that we all go over there and petition them to get a change of this 130.908 to include new budget, not starting right after the primary. I think it's wrong, but that's the way it reads.
The way I read it, it contradicts itself. Attorney General's opinion says that we can't tell an elected official how to use their budget and spend their budget. Well, she's still in, or Commissioner Rowan, or Judy Watson, both are still in the budget that we've already approved. So one Attorney General's opinion says we, we can't tell them how to spend their budget once we've approved that budget, but now we have an opinion that says we have to watch 1/12 of it. So, you know, there's the frustration.
I mean, you know, and I know that there's been comments before about an elected official going to schools that, after they have been defeated and things like that. This was a really big deal at the last one I went to, because there was a county judge who did not take, said, "I don't need my judicial classes anymore." Well, Texas TAC withheld their retirement until they fulfilled, they had to go back to school and take it after they were out of office to get their retirement. So, I mean, this whole thing is crazy.
Okay.
So.
But I agree with the last line. The expenditures that do not interfere with daily operations, that's, you're a common sense person. Just, I agree with you. She has that paper for death certificates, and it's parchment-type paper, I'm sure, or whatever. Just go ahead.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Taub, seconded by Commissioner Berry to change the 1/12% to just 1/12 of their budget per month. Is any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carried. Treasurer, consider and take appropriate action on approval, payment of state fees and fines, including all fees and fines and other entities due with regards to the quarterly fees and fines due. This amount not to exceed $175,000.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. What this is, with the new Tyler system, we have been a little bit delayed. I just wanted to make sure that this got on here because the state quarterly fines and fees, along with other quarterly payments, are due by April the 30th. I will get these warrants over to Stan so that his office can process those. I just need to make sure that we have the approval to pay these so that we do get our 10, 5% to 10% discount back from the state.
Good. I'll entertain a motion to approve these quarterly fines and fees not to exceed $175,000.
The way I understand it, what you're saying, this is the last court in April, and we won't meet again until the 12th or so of May. We'll ratify them at that, at that time as well, but you're just asking us to prove to move forward.
I'm asking for approval for me to go ahead and pay these. These are really not ours to keep. They're state fines and fees that are due by the end.
Kind of pass through.
Yes.
But we still get the discount if we go ahead and do it?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry to approve the payment of the quarterly fines and fees not to exceed $175,000. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? And all in favor? I opposed, the motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on the approval of allowing the IT department to send a blast email announcing the Optimus Club annual auction held on May the 3rd, 2014.
Normally, this time of the year, I come before you and ask you if we can stuff these in the payroll. With our county email system now, and it pretty much goes to everybody in the county email who has county email address, I'm asking that we put this flyer and I, I scanned it and sent it to each of you that we announced the auction is May the 3rd. It's at the Granbury Resort and Conference Center, and we hope that everybody comes out to attend.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the IT department sending a blast email announcing the Optimus Club annual auction held May 3rd, 2014.
Oh, move.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Towns. Any further discussion? And all in favor? I opposed, the motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on the approval of mandatory direct deposits on payroll for all employees of Hood County beginning the 60th day after the date of this court, with the option of a pay card as the second source of payment for payroll for those who do not want to direct deposit.
Judge and Commissioners, in 2009, I presented this same item to the Commissioners Court. At that time, we were at 65% direct deposit and 35% paper checks. At the time of this last payroll, we're at 85, I'm sorry, 86% direct deposit with only 14% of our employees doing paper checks. After installation of this new Tyler system, I spoke with the auditor and personnel about approaching the mandatory direct deposit and pay card system to increase the efficiency of our operation and the county's operation as a whole. Employers must offer their employees two ways to pay them. Right now, we're doing paper checks, we're doing direct deposit. The pay card is a paper check. You may take it to the bank, you may cash it, just like you could a paper check, with no fee to the customer. The reason that I put this on the agenda today is that under law, you do have to give your employees 60-day notice that it is going to be mandatory that they do one of the two within that 60-day timeframe. Yesterday, I sent all of you the information on the payroll cards, and as I explained, it basically works the same as a paper check. You can take it to the bank, cash it. It is loaded every pay period, just like a direct deposit stub. Your pay card is automatically, we send a file to the bank, the bank reloads the pay card. Instead of a check, they have a, a card, which can also be used at various locations, Walmart, you know, if they go to fill up with gas or whatever, they can use it there. Now, there is a fee, but if they take it to our bank, use the ATM once a month, or, excuse me, one pay period, they are allowed one free ATM transaction plus the check cashing at no charge.
Can they take every bit of the money that's on that card out at that time?
They sure can.
So, yeah, okay.
If they don't, they'll incur a fee to take it for a second.
They could incur a fee if they go to a vendor who charges a fee. And with their notice, they will get a list of how their pay, pay card works. For those that don't choose direct deposit, which this may have some choose direct deposit over. There is a one-time fee of $5 per card from the bank. So if we purchase 100 cards, that costs us $500. That is the only fee that we're going to incur. After that, there is no fee unless the employee loses their card. It would be upon the employee to pay for a new card. Another feature that goes along with both of these items is the capability of this new fancy software. We now have what's called employer self-service, where you can go online, you are given your own PIN, your own, through a secure online portal, you can review your paycheck, you can review your hours earned, your hours taken. The employee will have access to that information online. This is a savings to the county in a lot of ways. Number one, it saves paper. Toner cartridges, you're talking about 350 sheets of paper every pay period, checks or paper, it doesn't matter. Toner cartridges are very expensive, and we go through a lot of them in our office, just printing checks. The time that it takes for our employees to stuff and seal the payroll checks, we have to establish a pickup list and of course, delivering or processing pickup of payroll. Now, in the event that the employee did not have a computer or an email address, which the majority of county employees do, I did check with Jackie, and most of them do. I've spoken with both Jackie in IT and personnel, and they are prepared to set up a kiosk system where those employees that don't have access to the internet can go to that specific location, log in and get their information. Doug Dobbins with First Financial Bank is here. If you have any questions about the pay card or one thing I didn't add, if the employee wants to do direct deposit, our bank offers free checking to our employees. And Jackie can answer any questions on the kiosk system. With that, I'm asking that you all approve this process.
Does anybody have any questions for Kathy on this? What about you?
Any questions? I guess the problem is, is what about Road Ops? I mean, that affects Road Ops as far as, they don't have computers. You know, I mean, it will have a kiosk out there, will that work? Don, I mean, are you good with that? Because I know your guys don't have computer access very often, so that's the only thing that...
But most people in this day and age have a computer at home. And how do I know this? I have a few of those people, a few of the other people.
You toggle back and forth if you want to, is what you're saying.
Sure. It's there if, if they want to. If they don't have a home computer, they can access it from here.
Will you still deliver paper checks?
No.
So, basically, we'll do away with the payroll stuffers for people that want to do that as well. We'll have to do email blasts like you're trying to do in Opti.
Well, you could do email blast, or you could still deliver those to the apartment, to the different departments in our office.
They can just print it out at the kiosk, wherever they are, so...
There's also a place on that site where you can send information during, in the forum.
So...
Stan has gone, and I have gone too, to that site, and it is, it has a lot of information there. It, it is very, and it's secure.
One time or another, Don, you're probably going to have a computer out there at Road Ops. You already got the hardware and everything out there, right?
Got the fiber.
Just a matter of time getting it out there.
Yeah.
So we won't, nobody will get the little envelope with the calendars and things in it anymore? Is that what you're saying?
No, we've paid for some really good software. I, I am very pleased. I, I will say that it has been a horrible three weeks, but I am extremely pleased.
I just said, boy, what a week makes, doesn't it?
I'm telling you. Between the account codes and payroll, it has been a tough three weeks, but I'm very impressed with the capabilities of this system, and that is one of the fe, features that it offers.
I hardly ever opened it anyway, I mean, so...
Well, but, you know, the sheriff has, I noticed, 22 employees. Sheriff, how do you think, most of your people have access to computer, correct? I mean, technology's come a long way from '09 to today, and I mean...
Well, if you check around town, too, I think...
Everybody's doing it.
The school system, the city, the, I'm trying to think of some of the others. There's several people, big entities. I mean, we have 355 employees as of last pay period. We have a lot more employees than quite a few entities who are already doing this.
Wasn't it, I think the sheriff's department and Road Ops was the main ones that didn't have it, weren't they? Didn't have direct deposit?
They were the biggest, I think there's 10 in Road Ops and maybe 22 in the sheriff's department, but you have to remember, that's also the biggest department in the county.
Right, right.
And just one and two.
Well, they're going to have to live with it, though. I mean, you know, with, so what do you think, Sheriff?
Well, my last week, I picked up the checks. I picked up 141 checks. I'm surprised that there wasn't that many checks in there. I thought that most of us had direct deposits and they need, so especially with the other options, I think this is a good thing.
Well, you saying they need to, and then Don's saying that, I just, we just need help selling it, because that's, that was a holdup in the past. Some people wanted to actually see a check, and they asked that question. So, I mean, I just asked Jackie, I believe Jackie has a quick, he's going to make a comment, because about personal security on the county computer.
It is all, we did look at the security aspects of it, and just to make sure that it's, as each user uses the site, they log out and it automatically times out after a few minutes. And what this does give each employee the ability to do, it even works across most tablets and probably a lot of telephones as well, so that if someone does want to look at their check stub, they can look at it that way. They can also bring up a history at their house, so if they're trying to put together some paperwork just to refinance a house or looking at another car, and they want to bring up some check stubs and things of that nature, they can do that and take care of that at home as well. So you have the opportunity, we want to have the opportunity for users to take care of business here that they want to take care of. If they don't have a, a system or access to a system with a printer, they can do that here somewhere, provide an avenue for them to take care of that. If they do have those facilities at home, then it just makes that, that much easier for them to do those things, where they want to go back and look over their past history of pay stubs. If they want to look at what they're withholding at that time, make sure that their contact information is correct on that. Make sure, the other thing that I think is going to be a huge plus with this system is that you'll be able to look at your accruals, both your leave time, you know, that you have available to you, vacation hours, sick time, as well as any time that you've worked over and holiday time.
Thank you.
Yeah, some credit applications want your last paycheck sometimes, and I guess you can go to print it off on your personal computer and take it to them.
One thing Bob reminded me of, too, you can split direct deposit up to four different ways, too. So if you have a checking, then savings, then a credit union, or it's something that you want, you know, for example, I use that for my grandkids, so you can split direct deposit up to four, four ways. Now, pay cards, you can't do that with, I don't think, no.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion then to approve this mandatory going on to direct deposit and/or the pay card.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Towns. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on this? And all in favor? I opposed. Motion carried, thank you. Information Technology, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign the EOC structured cable installation sign-off for Thumbtacks Corporation. Is that right, Jackie?
Yes, sir, it is, Judge. This is basically, very simply, a sign-off sheet for the company that did the structured capeling. We went and did a walkthrough, looked at all the punch list items that we had there from them, and they just sent this to me, asking that we would go ahead and authorize you to sign that, saying that they, we went down through that punch list and completed those items with their company. And that's really about all there is to it. I went over the list, and everything that they needed to do was, had been done and completed.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve this sign-off, allow the judge to sign off the EOC structured cable installation for Thumbtacks Corporation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Towns. Any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed, motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize a purchase of 15 personal computer systems to replace older systems.
Judge, moving forward, discussion with, with yourself and trying to look at our, our systems that were the oldest that we had right now. We decided to try to take this in small chunks instead of ordering several hundred PCs or 100 PCs all at once that would, might take four months to, to deploy. We wanted to take these, just abide at the time and move and get, gather the ones that we needed to get to first. I went out and got a quote from Dell Computers for 15 workstations and monitors to replace some of the oldest systems first. Specifically, some of the systems that have just gone in and been deployed with the Tyler system, we would like to go ahead and get a few of those that we need to get up to speed and take care of those first. And then I would, I would like to look to the court for some direction and maybe submit an idea that each time we go to deploy any of these other PCs, that I bring that for the court for your, just your consideration and authorization to replace those each time. So I'm bringing that to you now. In front of you, you're going to see the quote for the systems themselves. There were supposed to be another page that didn't print out on the backside. The systems that you're looking at are the PCs only. The PCs and the systems together come to $17,929.70.
How much 17 what? Are you talking about systems, are you talking about operating systems like Microsoft 7 or something like that?
We are purchasing those with 7 on those as well. We're trying to reuse any licenses that we have right now since we're trying to move to a volume license, Judge, so I'm trying not to repurchase any licenses that we already have right now for the time being.
Jackie talked to me last week, he's got a few computers on Tyler that are absolutely so slow they can't stay up or can't process. And the fact with XP's going on right now, he's, and, and we have a CEGIS issue going on that's in the state level, he doesn't know how many computers are going to have to be replaced and what timely manner. So the audit he did that we asked for about a month ago was a, a great audit, but, you know, he wants to start with 15. That doesn't mean when Stan gives us approval or we get our money all back from the agriculture grant, we don't let him buy more than that, but he want, he needs an area, he has two right now that are completely dead in the water he needs to replace. So I'd make a motion, we allow him to buy the 15 units to proceed to replace the ones that absolutely can't work or have to be used with Tyler for that $17,929.70 out of Fund 55.
Now, are, do these systems include monitors?
These do include monitors, and those are the ones that, most of the time, Commissioner, we take a look at the monitor. If someone has a 19 or 20-inch monitor, we try to reuse that. Some of these systems have 14-inch monitors, some of them are 15-inch monitors. A lot of the newer applications now are starting to take advantage of a widescreen monitor. And these are, you know, monitors that are definitely seeing their time, and as we go through these, you know, if they already have a new monitor, we don't replace that monitor. They already have a new monitor, but if it's some of the older ones, then we do look at starting to phase those out.
The, the district judge came in last time and, and wanted to buy some new computers. Does this 15 include those or not?
We wanted to look at each one of those, the, the first, the first ones that were on our list were the ones that had the most issues right now running the new application of Tyler that we just deployed. We wanted to get that part seen to right away so that we can keep that up and functioning and get that to 100%.
Okay, which ones are those?
And, and take which ones are those. I think, Commissioner, there were like seven units for those. It was going to take seven units to rework those offices. Some of the offices have new systems, there's parts of them that do not. And then I wanted to sub, come back to the court and submit to you the other ones that we had slated for change, for authorization.
I think these are, these computers are like the vest. They have expiration dates on them, and when the software overloads them, they, they need to be replaced. Is that basically it?
It's just, they, they have a life cycle, Judge, they, they really do. And most of the systems in the county are, most of them are over five and a half to six years old, some of them much older.
What can we do with these old units? Can we get anything out of them, or...
Commissioner, we tried to restructure where we can, if there is somewhere that we can put a system where it doesn't have as much need for requirement, that we can reuse that system. system, we try to reuse it.
Like a kiosk out at road ops?
Kiosk, and things of those natures, we try to reuse those in every way possible before we feel like it's time to put those out to farm. And usually, when they're done, they're done, and we send them out at one final time to auction. But that's usually whenever they've normally reached somewhere around seven years old, seven to eight years old.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve a purchase of 15 computers for cost, total cost of $17,929.70. Do I have a second?
Second.
Out of Fund 55.
Out of Fund 55. Seceded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion?
You know, I do have one comment. I've talked to some people that, when we were talking about the Toughbooks, that refurbish and reinstall Windows 7 or whatever operating system. I mean, it was less than $1,000 to computer to do that.
On the, on the Toughbook?
Toughbooks we already have. Are we looking at doing anything like that, just using?
We've, we've used some, and we have tried some like that. The biggest problem that we ran into, and I'm not sure which company it was that you were speaking with, Commissioner, in our experience, when we tried to install, and the next level of operating system, Windows 7 and beyond, onto a CF-30, they just did not, Panasonic did not support that operating system for that model of system whatsoever. Normally, we wouldn't have a problem just putting Windows 7 on a unit, and we actually tested that in-house. And whenever we went to Panasonic, they said Windows 7 will not run on a CF-30, which is what we have in all of our units.
I believe we have some of them running Windows 7 now.
We might have one that doesn't have a screen on it, that doesn't operate correctly, but we have some CF-31s in some of the constables' cars that are brand, the brand-new CF, those are CF-31s, and not CF-30s. The CF-30s are the ones that we've had the problem with, especially whenever we have to start doing the connections back for Spillman, is where we ran into the largest amount of problems. Now, we can refurbish those, and we do refurbish the CF-30s throughout their lifespan, whenever they have a screen go out, or if they have a hard drive failure, or if they have anything go wrong, we refurbish those and use those. What we tend to see is after three to four and a half years, those units have had so much vibration and so many things, we send them off to get them refurbished, and then two and a half months later, we're pulling them back out to go refurbish another piece in that same unit, oftentimes. And that's the one thing, we're trying to get them where we can just keep them out as long as possible.
Judge, clarification. The reason that I think Jackie ought to be the one buying the computers is, people put on agenda to come to court and they want to buy something. We don't know if they need it or not, but if you go, we're paying him as a director of a department, that he needs to be the one that makes the decision who gets a computer and who doesn't need, not to just put it on the agenda, and how do I know if it works or doesn't? He came to me and said he had 15, if he could get 15 now, he could get about seven of them for Tyler upgrades. He pointed out to me that Tricia's was about 15 or 16 years old in Judge Walton's office. I mean, that's what we're paying him for. Let him make these decisions and put them out where they need to go.
All right, we have a motion and a second, to replace 15 computers for $17,929.70 out of Fund 55. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carried. Thank you, Jackie. Consider and take appropriate action to award RFP 2014-003 construction manager at risk, CMAR for Hood County YMCA construction project contingent on accepting of contract terms, to be awarded. Vendor, Hood County Commissioners' Court approved by county attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. You should have a handout that I put on your desk. This has been a long time coming, I think everybody knows that. RFP 2014-003 for the YMCA construction project was issued on March 1st, 2014. It was publicly opened March 31st, 2014. There were eight respondents to the bid who had submitted proposals. The evaluation team consists of three Hood County-appointed officials and Duane Brinkley, Brinkley Sargent Architects. On, on April 15th, the evaluation team met to conduct interviews and evaluate the proposals of each company. Interviews were performed with each respondent to the bid, and each was asked the same questions. The answers were discussed among the committee, tabulated, graded, and agreed upon. The proposal would be based on 40% of qualifications, 50% on general conditions, fees, and this includes all bonds. 10% was based on the interview process. WB Kibler has the lowest general condition cost of all companies at $244,125. They opted not to receive any pre-construction cost money to be included in their bid response. There also will be no money in general conditions for added months to the contract from them, should it go over the allotted 14 months. With their excellent interview process, experience with other YMCA projects, and low cost, we feel this will be a good partnership in going forward with the new county YMCA project. It is the recommendation of the evaluation committee that the award of the construction manager at risk go to WB Kibler Construction Company Limited of Dallas, Texas. This award is presented pending acceptance of contract terms by WB Kibler and the Hood County Commissioners' Court, and with contract wording approval by Hood County Attorney Lori Caspar. It is my request that you approve.
Thank you, Nelda. Do I have a motion to approve WB Kibler as the construction manager at risk, CMAR, for the construction of the Hood County YMCA project?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to cancel current RFP 2009-124 fire prevention, fire extinguishers, equipments contract due to noncompliance, spending 30-day notice, and reissue new RFP for fire extinguisher inspection and services requested by the Director of Maintenance, Tim Flowers.
Tim brought this to me. Our current vendor has failed to keep the county compliant with NFPA codes. He said a recent check of three buildings found numerous problems, inspections not being done, wrong extinguisher for the application, not mounted, sticker collars missing, et cetera. So, he has asked me to try and cancel this contract. It is up for rebid later this year anyway, so it wouldn't be canceling it by much, but this way, we can go ahead now and put out a new bid and try to get a different vendor. And it'll, we do have a 30-day clause in there. We have to let them know.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to cancel current RFP 2009-124 fire prevention, fire extinguishers for equipment services contract due to noncompliance.
So moved.
Whoa. Motion made by Commissioner Taut, secured by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed?
Motion carried.
Thank you. The, it is now 10:40, and the meeting is adjourned.